My mic working?
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Springford Area School District Work Session, Monday, August 21st. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Springford Board of School Directors believes the community has the right to bring before the Board issues and concerns they may have about items on the agenda or about items in general which affect the district or their children. Because of this belief and philosophy, the Board will schedule a time at the beginning and conclusion of every meeting to have an opportunity for community members to share their concerns with the Board. At the start of the meeting, members from the public may comment on agenda items only. The school Board will move through the meeting agenda, then at the end, when prompted, there will be a time for public comment. This meeting is being filmed to be broadcast on community cable channels and online. Individuals attending to make public comments should be aware that they are being videotaped. Speakers will be asked to state their name and the area in which you reside before your comment.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Becker, can we have a roll call for tonight's meeting?
Yes. In person this evening, we have Mrs. Dierdorf, Mrs. Hermans, Mr. Jackson, Dr. Mozart, Mr. Schaefer, Mrs. Weingarten, and Dr. Wright. On Zoom, we have Mrs. Earl, and Mrs. Zazowski is absent.
Thank you very much. And as far as announcements go, I want to welcome Stella Stein to our Board table. This is your first meeting, and we really look forward to having you onboard for the next two years.
Thank you. I look forward to being here.
Buckle up, Stella. Buckle up.
All right. Mr. Rizzo, do you have any announcements for tonight?
Nothing at this point. Dr. Murray or Dr. Jambo Batista will mention something tonight during our, during the report.
Okay. Thank you. With that said, we're going to move on to public to be heard on agenda items only. So for this first public comment, if there's anyone that would like to approach the podium, we just ask that you do so with your name, your township of residence, as well as the agenda item that you want to be referencing.
My name is Lena Ackerman from Limerick Township. Um, my name, sorry, hello, my name is Lena Ackerman. I'm a senior at Springford and a co-captain of the soccer team. I'm here on behalf of my teammates to ask that you vote to hire Jeff Kushner and Tim Leland as the varsity soccer coaches. This past June, you made a decision that severely impacted our team. Our head coach did not get his contract renewed. The weeks leading up to the season were filled with uncertainty, stress, and anxiety, worrying if we even had a season at all. We were the only varsity sport at Springford to have to cancel our team camp, which led to the, which the team was really looking forward to. We are very grateful that Jeff Kushner stuck around to support us and help us during our summer sessions. We're even more grateful that he applied and was hired to be our head coach. Although our team has faced adversity this summer, I'm happy to report that we're in a good place right now. Despite having a coach hired just one week before the season began, we made it through tryouts and our first week of practice, and our team just went undefeated at our first tournament this past weekend. Right now, as a team, we feel very strong and supported by our coaching staff. If anything were to change, I feel our season would be put in jeopardy, and it would not be fair to the student athletes who have worked so hard this offseason. Both Jeff Kushner and Tim Leland have done an incredible job so far with the limited time they have had to prepare. They have had, they have a phenomenal understanding of the game, and they know how to positively motivate the players. They are strong leaders, good role models, and I am proud to call them my coaches. I look forward to, I'm looking forward to a great season with Coach Jeff Kushner and Coach Leland and all of my Springford teammates.
Thank you very much. And, um, thank you very much. And just for the public, since the agenda item was not referenced, that was referencing personnel six letter, I believe it's letter J, extracurricular contracts. Anyone else? Thank you.
Hey, guys. Kathy Morris, Royersford. I want to speak on Agenda Item Two, the Spring City renovation. As we listen to the presentation tonight about Spring City renovation, my hope is that we hear more than just talks about money being approved for square footage, but we take a look at what could really help the children in Spring City. More individualized curriculum, more support in the classrooms for the teachers, proper programming that meets the needs of the kids in that community, especially since the Spring City Elementary has the lowest proficiency rating in the district in reading and math. Money spent on square footage is a waste if we're not willing to fill that space with support to help our children build a solid foundation in learning and prepare for a brighter future in Springford. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to approach a podium?
Okay. Never mind.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Moving on, we're going to go to our one and only presentation for tonight, which is our ICS Consulting presentation specifically about the Spring City renovation. We're moving here from Phase One and want to get an update. So at the podium, I think Jen Leoni, are you kicking us off tonight? Okay.
Talk. Hello, everybody. I appreciate your time tonight. My name is Jennifer Leoni, and I'm a Senior Program Manager with ICS. Here with me tonight is Phil Solomon. He's the Regional Director. Tim Geider is the Director of Engineering with ICS, as well as David Long, who is a Project Architect with Schrader Group Associates. So we are here tonight because next Monday, you guys are being asked to approve Phase Two of the Spring City Elementary School renovation and addition project. What I'd like to do tonight is review our project approval process, discuss the design process to date, have Dave share some of the conceptual plans and renderings. I'll give an overview of the schedule, update you on the budget, and then I'll leave time for questions at the end. So this project was broken down into three approval phases. Phase One was approved this past March, and that included programming, conceptual design, and schematic design. We wrapped up schematic design, and now we're approaching you for approval for Phase Two, which will push us into design development, construction drawings, and bidding. At the end of bidding, we'll come back to the Board with our bid numbers and present them to you for approval for Phase Three. The design process is not just the architects, the engineers, and the consultants putting ideas on paper. We've been working with the stakeholders as well. We've been working with two key groups, the Project Oversight Committee, which includes representatives from ICS, the design team, the administration, and the Board. We've been meeting every other week since the beginning of approval of Phase One, and we will continue to meet with this group throughout the entire duration of the project. The other group that we've been meeting with is the Core Admin Design User Group. This group also includes representatives from ICS, the design team, the administration, and includes the principal from Spring City as well. Their goal is to help the design team further identify programming needs for this project. So when we first started meeting with these groups, we already had a list of building requirements that were previously identified with the Board and ICS in early working sessions, and they included addressing the deferred maintenance, providing additional classroom space, making sure there is a dedicated art room, dedicated music room, dedicated Ramquest space. We wanted more, or you wanted more small group instructional areas. You wanted a large group instructional area and more collaboration in conference room. And the plan that Dave Long is going to present tonight checks all of those boxes. So how did we get here? What does that design process look like? Dave is going to walk us through how we got here tonight and share some of his images with us.
Hello, everyone. So Schrader Group was brought onto the team in late spring, and we immediately began the planning process then. After a kickoff meeting with the Project Oversight Committee, we guided the core design group through tours of several of our recent renovation and addition projects, and we've also provided links to the virtual tours of our other new construction elementary schools. In addition to that, we actually visited Upper Providence Elementary School to gain a sense of what types of, you know, standards Springford Area School District is actually looking for. During this tour, we were able to see kinds of finishes that were expected to be included in the project. After those tours, programming meetings were held with the district's core design team to confirm the types of spaces and sizes of those spaces that were required for Spring City Elementary School in particular. So within the, with the program document and the feedback from the tours, Schrader Group created several concept designs to present it to the district core design team. Several, after several discussions, one schematic design concept was agreed upon to proceed with a cost estimating process, which we'll get into in a later slide. It's all a fast-moving and immersive process, and it's only worked because of the commitment of the district's, you know, representatives throughout the entire process. So there's about 7,000 square foot, foot, sorry, 7,000 square feet of new construction, which includes, which includes the existing courtyard being infilled to create a portion of the media center and the small group instructions, a new addition on to the bottom of the screen there, which includes four new classrooms, and a small addition to the administration area so that we can actually right-size that space for the new nurses suite and the new administration offices. In addition, we added, you know, additional features to, you know, increase the curb appeal and aesthetic of that, that location. So the additions are only a part of the project. Ultimately, the existing spaces are all going to be renovated, so this is going to look like a completely new building. This will include renovations to the existing classrooms, the kitchen, and the cafeteria space. We're going to separate the art and the music room, as stated in the previous slide. We're also creating an LGI space in the center there, which is a large group instruction space, and it's directly adjacent to the media center and the Ramquest space. And this creates a core that can be used as a flexible space to support both of those programs. So as previous, stated on the previous slide, this is a look at the potential of that new Ramquest, Ramquest core space. And the point of this slide is to show the design of the new roof, which we're popping up and providing clear stories around, to flood that space with natural light, which wouldn't get it otherwise because it's at the center of the building. So Spring City's current main entrance is also updated to create a focal point for the building, and the schematic designer proposing to create a more visible entry piece feels welcoming and inviting for the students, staff, and visitors. In addition, to the left there, there's an entry canopy that guides students, visitors, from the new parent drop-off lane and visitor parking lot to the front door. Adding glass to the administration suite also helps administrators see who's coming and going from the building. In the background, you can see those added clear stories to the right of the picture there and that Ramquest core space, and we actually carried that concept forward to the new lobby space as well, where the vespial is only about eight feet tall, but the glazing, you know, pops up higher to, again, flood that lobby with natural, more natural light. That was it. Thank you.
So I'm going to give a overview of the schedule. This project was approved in March. We just wrapped up the schematic design phase, so we're here seeking approval for Phase Two, which, as mentioned earlier, pushes us into design development, construction drawings, and bidding. Upon approv, once we come back with the bid results, we'll seek approval for Phase Three, which will unlock the construction. Upon approval of Phase Three, construction will kick off around June of 2024. So the students and the staff will move out, and the contractors will move in. They'll be there through the duration of that summer, the duration of the following school year, and into the following summer of 2024. At the end of construction in August of, I'm sorry, 2024, 25, thank you. In the end of, at the end of 20, the construction product process in 25, in August of 25, the contractors will move out, the students and staff will be able to move back in, and then the following school year, you guys can start off with a brand-new, updated, and refreshed building. So we're going to give you a quick update of the budget. The good news here is that no more funding is being requested. The original budget was $17.4 million. At the end of schematic design, we sent the documents out to be estimated by a third-party estimator. We did an in-house estimating process. We had the architects, the engineers, and consultants all review these estimates to make sure that their scope of work, as they intend to design it, was indeed captured in these numbers and that they were accurate. And at the end of our due diligence, we, it turns out that we are still on budget at $17.4 million. This budget includes 4.5% design contingency, 4.5% construction contingency, and additional 7.5% for cost escalation. In addition to that, during our design process, it was discovered that the Spring City sits in a community, energy community center, which could unlock further funding for the project through an IRA Inflation Reduction Act credit. So as we move forward into the design development phase, we're going to investigate that a little further to see if that is indeed a viable option for this project and for the district. So what are the next steps? The administration is seeking Board approval on property item A next Monday. Upon approval, we'll immediately move into design development. We have a land submission package scheduled for September 15th. We'll work through construction documents in the winter, send it out for bidding in the spring, and then return to the Board in April with our bid results to seek approval for the construction process. So I know I threw a lot of information at you very quickly at a very high level, so if there are any questions or clarifications, please feel free to ask, and thank you for your time. I appreciate it, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And at this point, with Mr. Jackson and myself residing on the POC, I will defer to the rest of the Board members to see if there are any clarifying questions on the presentation.
I just had a quick question as the teacher on the Board, looking at that date for construction ending in August. Do we have a buffer? Is it the beginning of August, end of August? I'm just concerned that construction will run late, and then we're going to have teachers and students scrambling to get into a workable building.
Yeah, there, there is a buffer, and then we would work with, obviously, the operations people to make sure everything is cleaned and final clean and ready for move-in. So it's, it's not like we're going to end the day before school starts. We have, we have a planned start there. So, good point, but definitely, definitely something we're thinking about.
Thank you, Dr. Mozart. Any other questions?
I have one. And thank you for the presentation, Jen. Simply outstanding. To follow up on the Dr. Mozart's question, we are on a very tight schedule. I'm very comfortable with the schedule. I sit, I sit on the Board, but I also live in this world, so I'm very comfortable with the schedule that they have here and the items that, and the potential scenarios we've looked at for this. The only item I, I really have here is, next week is important, and the way we set this up, it's in three phases, so everyone can look at it, they can evaluate it, it's not a lump sum. So everyone has the opportunity to ask their questions. But I do stress to the Board that next week is an important week, no matter how you vote. But just look at it from the perspective of what we said we would do from the onset, they've followed through exactly where we are. And as Madam President said, we, we meet with them every two weeks, and I will hold them accountable to every item of the contract that they've signed with us. Thank you.
I can vouch for that. He has.
I can vouch for that, too.
And I, I will just say that, you know, coming to the end of Phase One and seeing that, you know, schematic design and knowing how many different schools you went to go visit, I am very excited. I know that there was a comment made earlier with regards to, you know, making sure that the, we're capturing, you know, the ability to facilitate small group instruction and have enough classrooms and really bring Spring City up to parity with the rest of our elementary schools. The fact that it has not had a dedicated music room and art room like the rest of our elementary schools is simply shocking to me when we started this process. So I'm glad to see that a lot of the requirements that were asked, you really went through and checked the box. So, thank you for that.
Mrs. Hermans, I have a question. And thank you very much for this. I just wanted to make sure that we are complying with the safety, with school safety, as far as, and I don't know whether Chief Boyer is someone who should be consulted, with emergency vehicle access to buildings, safety glass and everything, but because buildings, schools, buildings are unique in that.
So to your point, I, I talked about the first two key working groups that we've been engaged with, but there will be more user groups. One of those is security and IT and all the other special interests within Spring City. So we will be pulling opinions and working with everybody to make sure that safety is definitely incorporated into the program.
Yep, thank you, because safety is, of our students is paramount and our staff. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for our presenters? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Section Three, we do have an action item on the agenda. So this is Action Item A, Administration recommends the approval of CDW to provide technology professional services at a cost that will not exceed $50,000 and will be paid from the technology operating budget. Do I have a motion? Is there a second? Okay. Questions and discussion?
I'm sure everyone knew this question was coming. Here we are again, at the last minute, submitting an item at a regular work session for approval. So I have several questions with this. And I know there was an internal, it was a Board memo. Exactly what is technology professional services? We're going to CDW, it's a, it's a $22 billion company, we have, I don't know, 13,000 employees. We're going to CDW, it's a $22 billion company, we have 13,000 employees. So there was no one in-house could perform this task. There was no local companies that we could utilize to perform these duties. I'm still trying to understand what we're paying $50,000 for, or what are we getting for $50,000 that we don't have, that we don't have staff in-house to be able to perform?
Mr. Rizzo or Mr. Catalano, who I see looking at each other, who wants to take that?
I can't actually see him. I see his top of his head. But I'll let him speak to it, but part of it is that we did have, we do have one of our staff members in the tech department that is leaving, which is, which is part of the reason why. So Bob, if you want to speak in a little greater depth?
Yes, we had a resignation, two weeks' notice, his last day is next Friday. This is essentially the highest-level position below me in the district, runs our entire infrastructure. I'm looking for essentially a Band-Aid to get us through until we get someone in that chair to help us, especially with the beginning of the school year. This is something we had planned on and budgeted for, helping us with high-level projects during the school year. However, due to the sudden resignation in the beginning of the school year and the many projects we have ongoing, I'm looking to fill that gap until we can get a candidate in that chair successfully.
So what was the reason for looking to hire CDW?
I spoke to three different companies. I've done projects with CDW in the past. The company we were currently using for support hours was unable to provide services that I was happy with. The response times were not up to par. And the other company I spoke to, I liked, but their rate was astronomical. So it's a company I've done with, business with in the past, I trust them. The consultant that we'd be looking to bring onboard does similar things for other school districts in the area.
Do we currently have CDW providing any other services for us?
We've done other projects with CDW in the past, our smart panels, our firewall renewals, some equipment. They're not currently doing any other professional services for us currently.
So they've provided hardware? I'm talking about professional services?
We've bought hardware from them in the past, yes.
Have we utilized them in the past for professional services as a consultant?
Yes.
The $50,000 is predicated on what? What's, I guess my frustration here is, and I understand people resign, I am disappointed that we have no one in-house, which I always go back to growing internally, we have no one in-house who could carry this pail of water, is what you're telling me.
Well, our core team consists of three people, network, software, and systems, to dump the load of the system administrator on the network and software administrator, who could help us. But in the amount of work on our plate right now with the beginning of the school year and infrastructure projects that we have working, we really would like to bring somebody in to make sure everything's smooth sailing. The number is 50,000 because I didn't want to come back to the board. The initial quote is for 100 hours for $21,000. I said not to exceed $50,000 because if we can't get someone within that first 100 hours to cover us, so I wouldn't have to come back to the board and ask for more money.
So, I know you're coming. So for the 100 hours, that is projected over what time period?
He's coming on-site initially to do an investigation and evaluation and help us with some things we need, and then he'd be available on an as-needed basis.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask, okay, I guess, Mr. Rizzo, are you familiar with this contract? Because he reports to you, right?
He reports to Dr. Murray.
Dr. Murray?
The contract, I believe, has been reviewed, correct?
And so, I mean, what's placed in front of the board is so absent specificity that it's very difficult to even place any context on this. So $50,000 with no timeframe, I think I just heard 100 hours. What was the hourly rate? Because, I mean, I don't know what our procurement rules are in-house, but just having three random vendors interviewed and then hearing one was astronomical, and a billion-dollar company was the one that was selected.
$22 billion.
Yeah, there you go. It just doesn't feel like we've, I'd love to know if there's any local firms that would like to bid on this and beat the hourly rate and maybe save money. That's number one. Number two, if it's $21,000, why is $50,000 on the, on for voting? I mean, that seems like quite a delta for me. I don't know. None of it feels really good. Vagueness, and if we, if this is the cause of a staff resignation, do we have zero plans in HR for any staff resignations within our IT? And we're caught flat-footed entirely, that we don't feel like we could fill the position within a month or, or two weeks? And furthermore, if this is a back-to-school pain point, back-to-school is going to end pretty soon from a timeframe standpoint, right? So I would think then that would no longer be a reason to seemingly pay a lot of money for a few weeks' worth of work.
So there was a lot there. I'm going to try and unpack what I can, and Bob, please step in and correct me if I misspeak. I think the goal was to bring in the consultant for the busy time right now, with the initial intent being, or anticipated with at least 100 hours, which could be used as needed. So that brought us to about 21,480 for those 100 hours. But his concern, I think, is what we don't know is a little bit down the road. So I do think that Mr. Catalano is trying to plan for that unknown, that we just don't know how quickly we can get someone in. And so we didn't want to be in the same boat where, next month, we were coming back and saying, we now need another 100, 100 hours last minute. So because we didn't meet in July, in June and July, this absolutely feels like last minute as well, which we understand. So I think that's, that's kind of where it's coming from, but that he would monitor the hours and only use the consultant on the as-needed basis where the, the high-needed tasks are to make sure that no balls dropped for the start of the school.
Bob, is everything I said accurate?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Leece, is this in the pipeline for advertisement, or has it been advertised?
I'm sorry, can you please repeat your statement?
Are we out seeking candidates for this position?
We are, it's posted.
Have there been any applications? Six.
We have six.
Six? Okay. So $214-ish an hour, I mean, this is a work session, right? So this is great information. My recommendation would be to come back with the minimum amount that we think we're going to need to spend, because I bet whoever we hire is not going to be at $214 an hour. So thank you for clarifying.
Am I hearing that the recommendation is to amend this item or to bring it back?
That's, that's what I was clarifying. So it seems like, Mr. Schaefer, correct me if I'm wrong, that you would prefer this to, say, you know, X number of hours for $21,000, and if more is needed, to come back to the board table.
Yeah, and again, thank you. One board member's opinion, right? So that would be my public opinion on the matter.
Two board members' opinion.
Yeah, I'll just say that I think this does, this does need to have a vote tonight. I'm fine with amending it to, to be the lower dollar amount, 21, or even round it up to 25, so that we can get things moving. We do have students coming next weekend. If technology's not where it needs to be, that could be a barrier for our teachers, which we don't want.
Okay, here's the hard question. Is our infrastructure in that bad a shape that we are concerned they're going to find some potholes? Out of all the investments we've made, I would not think that we're in that bad a shape. But that appears to be what's being presented here, and I think, Dr., maybe Dr. Murray said that, and clarify it, do, or maybe it was Mr. Catalano, that we're planning for the worst. So my question goes back, the infrastructure we have in place, we know what's in place. So we have an outsider coming in who is going to burn through dollars trying to find out what our issues are? So?
It's support.
Supporting what?
So I apologize if I misspoke and led you down the wrong road. I think it is more so, and again, Bob, please step in, I think it's more so that we do have, you know, lean department, and each person in our department does very specific roles. And so with the departure, with the resignation, that's going to leave one person who has a large load on his, on their plate. We're going to be down a staff member. So we just want to make sure that the roles that that person carries aren't dropped. So I don't, I didn't mean to suggest that we have issues and we need to bring somebody in to find the problems. It's more so to make sure that the work that this one person is doing, or at least the key roles that can't wait, that nothing drops, especially in the beginning of the school year.
Can you, Mr. Catalano, just plain talk it for me? When we say nothing drops, what is the impact to the students and to the teachers if this position were to be loaded onto, potentially onto another person? What do we mean by nothing drops? Like, what's the worst-case scenario here?
As I said, this role is our system administrator. It's the highest-level position in my department besides myself. This person drives the car, runs the entire infrastructure, all the servers, all the backup, all the accounts, active directory, security. Essentially, it's, it's a high-level role. And again, my core team is three people. I call them the three-headed monster because they all do the same thing. We have network, software, and systems. This is a high-level, major position. I don't want to take any chances, and my recommendation is to bring this person in. And again, I did the higher number because in the past, if I came back to the board and asked for more money for the same thing, it wasn't well-received. So I was trying to cover myself with a not-to-exceed number. I don't know how long it's going to take. It's a very competitive market. Other places may have different compensation. It may be difficult to fill this role. So I wanted to make sure I was covered. I ballparked with that number approximately seven weeks with clearances. If someone gets held coming from another district, you never know how long it's going to take to fill that chair. So I thought, based on past experience, do the higher number, not to exceed. Hopefully, I don't get anywhere near that number, but I didn't want to come back and ask for more money for the same project.
And Mr. Catalano, can you clarify, too? You said that you had budgeted for this, kind of as a contingency, should we need, not necessarily the specific piece, but for professional services, correct?
Absolutely correct. Mr. Fink and yourself discussed this over the summer, looking at staffing. We purposely allocated, I believe, $120,000 to have someone come in to help us with high-level projects, consulting, especially for us to prepare with our Google transition, amongst other things with our infrastructure. It's something I thought we needed to do after five years, to take another look at it, get an outside perspective, and help us with some of the heavy lifting, and then my staff can take it from there. Forgive me, are we crossing streams with professional services for the staff moving forward and then, and taking money out of that budget to adhere to essentially being caught flat-footed with no resignation plan for a systems administrator resignation? Is that what he just tried to explain? Like, we had professional services, he mentioned Mr. Fink, you, $100,000 budgeted. It sounded like for something that was needed, correct? So is he suggesting that that money that was needed is now going to allocate this, which is an emergency? Is that, and he's trying to justify that? Is that correct?
That's not the impression I have. I think that over the last several years, some of our technology positions, we know have been difficult to fill, and that has been a challenge. So I think that the money that Mr. Catalano budgeted was to try and be proactive and ensure that, as some of the projects come up, that may not necessarily need an entire position, could still get addressed by bringing in a consultant to help with certain projects. So I think it is more so contingency to be proactive in the planning piece as opposed to reallocating something that we now won't have, if that makes sense. And again, please correct me, Bob, if I'm misspeaking.
I guess my final comment on this, I, I'm not, I completely forgot we were voting on this tonight, sorry, because my mindset's in this is a work session. Plus, it's still summer for me. So we're here because we had no resignation plan for assistant administrator, essentially. Like, we're in this emergency, and when exactly was the resignation turned in? That's a, that last part's a question. First part was a statement.
I don't remember the exact date, but it was, it was, I think, the Monday or Tuesday a week or so ago. It's pretty recent. He provided his two-week notice.
Are there any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Was there, I just, was there a desire to amend?
I didn't hear the motion to amend specifically, but if that is...
Yeah, my apologies. I did not officially ask to amend. I would like to officially ask to amend if there's enough support, make the wording, whatever the number is that we absolutely need until the next work session, or the next board meeting, not next week, right? Okay. Twenty, 23?
If we were to amend this, what would the dollar amount be?
Okay, make it $22,000.
It's all projected, so.
Yeah, maybe, maybe it's less. Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to go to the motion.
There was a motion to amend, just to revise that number to reflect $22,000. Was there a second on the amendment?
I thought it was Mr. Jackson.
A second?
Okay, good. And then there can be discussion here and public comment on the amendment.
All right. Is there?
Well, I'm comfortable with the amendment with the idea that if the technology comes or the administration comes back to us requesting additional funds, that we're prepared to acknowledge that.
Or how about we get a full-time position filled within five weeks, right?
That would be great.
Any other comment or discussion at the board table before we go to public comment? Okay.
One quick question. Ms. Leece, when was this posted again? I'm sorry.
It was posted the Wednesday following the letter of resignation. So if we got it on a Tuesday, it was posted that Wednesday. The posting is due to come down, I think, this week on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Okay, any other board comment, questions, discussion? Okay, going on to public comment. If there's anyone in the room that would like to make public comments specifically on Action Item 3A, please approach the podium with your name and township or residence. Okay. All right, all those in favor of amending, all those in favor of amending Action Item 3A to read, "The administration recommends the approval of CDW to provide technology professional services at a cost that will not exceed $22,000 and will be paid from the technology operating budget." Please say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Earl?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. That motion passes 7-1. Okay? Now, we will vote on the actual item. So, "The administration recommends the approval of CDW to provide technology professional services at a cost that will not exceed $22,000 and will be paid from the technology operating budget." Do I have a motion?
So moved. You don't need a motion.
I don't need, just go right into the roll call since we did it. All right, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mrs. Earl?
Aye.
Okay, and I heard one no. Okay, and that passes 7-1. Okay? Thank you. Moving on to board and committee reports, and we will go right to Mr. Call and Ms. Stein.
So this past summer's been a pretty busy summer for us. Some past events that just occurred, we had the senior portraits occurring throughout the summer, and there's still some in the September and August months, so schedule them if you haven't had them already. But a lot of the seniors have already taken their pictures, so those went well. Additionally, fall sports began last week, so we had mandatory practices and tryouts starting last week. First-day verification opened up on August 1st, so if you haven't already done that, please do so, parents. Springford Educational Golf Outing happened on August 5th, and that was very successful. And finally, the self-guided tours of schools began last week. Those were for the elementary schools, and now for the high schools, they're continuing out. For the high school and for the middle schools, they're continuing out for the rest of the week.
And then on to future events. Building walkthroughs did begin this week. And then the SAT will be administered this Saturday, August 26th, here at Springford. Then we have the first day of school next Monday, August 28th. And then we have Labor Day on September 4th, which is a Monday. Finally, or no, not finally, sorry, under... Finally, or no, not finally, sorry, Underclass Picture Day on September 9th, that is Friday. And then the day after that, we have the ACT September 9th, and that will be administered here as well.
And as always, there are just a couple reminders for folks at home. Continue to check out the weekly updates for district-wide news, especially as we enter the first week of school. It's really important to be updated on what's going on and as well as some policy changes. Complete the summer assignments. Students, please get those done. They do make up a significant portion of the first quarter grades. And finally, there was some 2023, 2024 committee meetings will resume in September, so stay folks, stay tuned for that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, discussion for student reps? Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on, Dr. Wright, do we have an MCIU report?
And the MCIU meeting will be this Wednesday, so I would have a report after that. I do know that they had their convocation yesterday at North Penn, no, today, at North Penn High School, so they're, they're back to work. And I'll follow up after the meeting Wednesday.
Would you prefer us to put it on for next week?
That would be lovely. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Murray, Dr. G.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. We only have one report this evening, so I will be reporting out on behalf of Dr. Murray and myself. As we are fast approaching the beginning of the new school year, our classrooms will soon be filled with anxious and excited students. Tomorrow, we are excited to welcome back teachers, support staff, and all employees who are returning to work for our in-service days, with convocation being tomorrow. We are equally delighted to welcome approximately 30 new staff members to our district who participated in new hire orientation last week. And finally, to the families who are new to us and have children who will be attending any one of our schools, we welcome you to Springford and welcome you to Ram country. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had one comment to make to follow up on your report, Dr. G. I wanted to wish you a happy birthday.
Thank you.
Mr. Fitzgerald, anything new?
Yes, just briefly. In the agenda this evening for approval next week are three matters, assessment of these matters that date back to the 2023 tax year, which would have been an appeal that was made August of the previous year. Typically, our office shares with the Finance Committee kind of the history of where the numbers were from a value perspective with our appraiser and the like. I think that Mr. Fink was going to have numbers available either tonight or for next week to share with the board just with regard to the, these specific properties. In the same vein, I mentioned back in June, I believe, that I expect to have a final settlement with regard to the Exelon, PICO, Constellation agreement. We don't have it yet, but we should have the final agreement this week or early next week. We've been discussing over the course of the summer, final terms to then present to the board soon.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, I wanted to talk about that later on, Mr. Fitzgerald, but that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. So moving on to the next portion of our agenda, we're going to be going through the action items for which we'll be voting on next week. So any questions or discussion on section five, minutes A and B?
Item 14? I mean, sorry.
I do have a question for the first time in my three terms on the board with regards to minutes. So in, on B, this is the minutes that were from the June 26th meeting. As I was unable to be here in person and sincerely regret that, I read through that for Personnel X, which was, in fact, the girl soccer coach. It read that Mrs. Weingarten is the one that made the motion, and then it was seconded. And then also, Mrs. Weingarten then, in fact, voted against her own motion. So I just wanted to make sure that's, in fact, what happened. It seems odd. I've never heard of that.
Yeah, we'll go back and look at that. That does, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Section six Personnel, letters A through J. And Mr. Rizzo, as usual, because we give the district authority to extend hires, you're going to see a lot of names, so I'll give you a few minutes.
I, a question, just, right? I mean, so it looks like we have two administrators that popped up. Again, I've been on this board a long time. I've never seen this before. So I also see something later on in the agenda about, that I'll, I guess, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask that now or for, looks like a temporary contract at a ridiculous rate.
You can't, you can't ask that now?
Can't ask that now? Okay. So I just, I guess I'm noting the fact that we're losing administrators, too.
I would just say that over the course of the summer, we did, we have one that submitted a letter of retirement and will be relocating to be with her family, and the other one did take a job in another district.
So we didn't see any of this coming. We got no heads up on any of this. It just seems like these are major positions that, it's a lot of, I call it late resignations, you know, right before school starts. So I'm just curious. There was no heads up prior to, three weeks ago, or two weeks ago, that, I mean, Dr. Paci, she was, two weeks ago, she just says, "Okay, I'm leaving." So I'm just saying to the administration, whether there's any, any communications, that's all.
I, I mean, I'm limited in what I can say, but her letter came in, when her letter came in, and we took action as soon as it did. As far as the other one's concerned, I was at least alerted to the fact that there was some interviewing going on, but that was it.
So are we, have we posted for UPE principals, since I think, I could be wrong here, but I'm fairly wrong. She was the only principal that UPE has ever had.
That is correct. She was instrumental in building that building and building the staff, building up the staff. Yes, that is correct. As far as the plan is concerned, we have been conducting interviews with 56. We did final rounds today for the assistant principal to 56. And then we have, we are currently in the process of planning interviews for the Upper Providence position. In that interim, Dr. Murray will be relocating down to Upper Providence for the two-week time period until we have an opportunity for an interim to come in on September 5th, so that our staff and our students are cared for during this transition time.
I don't know if I can ask this either, but I'm curious to know, for the interviews for, to replace at 56 and at Upper Providence, is there in-house interest?
The answer is yes to both of those positions. Correct.
It's good to hear, Mr. Rizzo. Good to hear.
Any other questions with Personnel?
Yeah, I mean, I do. Yeah, thank you. So work session, that's what we do. Again, an unbelievable number of new teachers, and I noted that they're all, I mean, they're all at our base salary, which on one hand sounds wonderful from a budget standpoint, but on the other hand, that means to me, these are inexperienced new teachers. So there's a greening of teachers across the country, and it looks like Springford is, you know, following suit. Now, perhaps it's a policy or a procedure of our HR department that we just seek the lowest possible salary step for our new teachers. I just wanted to note that publicly, that that's concerning to me.
If I can address that, please?
Yes, could you please?
Sure. So there are individuals who do come to us with experience, either out of state, that we don't give credit for, or they've done multiple long-term sub-experiences, and again, we don't give credit for that. However, to say that they're all brand-new, fresh out of school, is not an accurate statement.
I didn't say fresh out of school. Thank you. Typically, we, in the work world that I've experienced, you tend to compensate higher for greater talent. So it's just concerning to me that we're seemingly paying the bottom of our payment scale for all of our new teachers. Perhaps that can be looked at by some as great negotiating. It's just, you know, I like to pay for talent, especially our teachers. Thank you.
Ms. Leece, how long have we been following the structure that we currently use for compensation?
We've been using the same structure for many, many years. We bring teachers in if they have experience in state and public schools, one step for every two years of experience, with the exception of the extremely hard-to-fill positions. You will see under professional employees, those who are already tenured in the state that appear on this board agenda, that we are compensating them for that. When we have individuals who come to us either out of state or with long-term sub-experience or not a full year of contracted, contracted experience, they don't get step credit for that. However, they may have experience coming to us within the classroom.
So, just to clarify, when you say many, many, many years, would, would that be four years, eight years, 12 years? And is it typically a process that the school board is involved in voting upon that structure?
It's been a practice that has been in place since I've been here. I did make a recommendation to the superintendent that we relook at that process, so he and I will be having conversations further about that.
So would you feel comfortable saying that there are board members at this table that this compensation structure has been in place as long as they've been on the school board?
So I think, let's look at this on face value, okay? There are 15 positions here, and I understand what Mr. Schaefer is saying, and I agree with him to some extent. You look at it from a financial perspective, it's, it's a good, it's good moves by the district. But if you look at the number, the total of 15 that we've hired, out of those 15, 14 are at a step one or step two. I think it's more of an observation than a criticism.
So I, I'm going to just kindly request that we table this, because I do think that the tone is, is not something that I want to continue. But I do think, Mr. Jackson, you bring up a good point, that this is something that we can reevaluate, especially given that next year is a teacher contract year, and being on the Personnel Committee with me, and I think we'll have an open seat with Mrs. Zazowski next year, it is something that we can absolutely reevaluate in terms of attracting and retaining and making Springford the best place to work, so that we can lower the attrition that we see.
I did have a question, Ms. Leece, about hiring our substitutes. Is that something that we do as a practice?
If they are most qualified for the position. So the information that I do provide you throughout the summer about our hires does list at the bottom the long-term subs or internal candidates that we have, who have applied for those jobs and have received those positions.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So I'll follow up on Dr. Wright's question. So are any of these teachers from long-term subbing?
Are they for long-term subbing, or they were long-term subs?
Were they long-term subbing, subbing at Springford?
Yes. Some of those individuals may have been long-term subs, but not perhaps the full year.
Okay. Thank you.
I have another question for Jay in Personnel. Having to do with the extracurricular contracts, since, in particular, the soccer coach for the girls' high school team, so it's number 52, and then subsequently, I guess, number 53. Since the June meeting, and the original girls' coach that was on the board agenda was not approved, even though our superintendent, our high school principal, and our athletic director sponsored or was in support of that individual, I was just curious what administration did this time that would provide us with any different outcome? Because I'm, I'm assuming, I mean, the board is the one that singled this individual out. And so unless we have a board filled with experts in girls' soccer coaching, to me, it was a vote of no confidence for our administration at that point. So I'm just curious as to what has happened that would make the board members who voted against the original feel more comfortable in voting for this one.
Do you want me to start, or do you want Mr. Rizzo to start? Because I don't think it's a fair assessment to say that we were singled out when, without going into specifics, because again, we're dealing with personnel, and there's, we're limited with what we can say. You know that we've had exec sessions and that there have been conversations. Now, I don't recall if you were in attendance or not, but we've had exec sessions on this issue that was brought forward from administration. So I don't think that's a fair assessment to say, hey, the board came up and just pulled this out and singled it out, when there were multiple communications from administration with regards to this.
Can I clarify, please? What is not fair about a factual statement that an individual coach was pulled out after being on the agenda for recommendation for approval from administration? What is not factual about that?
No, that was factual with regards to it, but it was also in conjunction with our solicitor based on all the previous interactions that we had. But I'm going to let administration talk to this, because frankly, I think that we have, you know, we're in a good spot, and you don't see anyone's name singled out for voting next week.
I mean, honestly, I thought we were in a good spot in June, so...
Well... Dave, I'll be honest with you. Mrs. Weingarten, I would have loved for you to have that comment if you were in the meeting in June, because the outcome may have been different. Because it wasn't a vote of no support or no confidence, it was a vote of, there was no approval or disapproval. We didn't have enough people at the meeting to actually make any type of action.
But there were enough board members that voted against it. And in my tenure, I just have never seen a school board act like it did.
I appreciate that.
And it was embarrassing for me to be associated with it. That's my opinion.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions with Personnel?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear administration comment.
Unless, Mr., go ahead.
I would just say that as of the June board meeting, we had a need for a coach, so we posted. We did go through a posting once. We did one-week posting. We did, we did, went through our process. We did not have the confidence that we needed, so we posted again. Posted for two weeks that time, went through an interview process, and we brought forward the names that, the name of the head coach that you have on the agenda tonight. We feel confidently that the coach that is listed here will do an excellent job, and it seems he already has.
One last question, not to do with soccer. Item H, is Mr. Bow, was Mr. Bow's an, an internal? Was, was he here or is from the outside? I'm not familiar.
Mr. Bow is an external candidate.
Internal?
External.
I struggle with this every time, guys, but... Okay. Thank you.
If I could just simply say that we are acutely aware of the board's interest in hiring internal candidates. We are, and...
I know. That's just my opinion. I'm not speaking for the board. I just firmly believe in growing from within, that's all. And I've been steadfast about that for eight years, and I'd just like to see the people that are here brought up.
I agree, I agree with you, Clinton, or Mr. Jackson.
You can call me Clinton.
Yeah, I also would be in agreement of, you know, leadership opportunities for our teachers that would like to be able to move into administrative positions, that we have perhaps paid for them to take the necessary coursework to get their principal certs. And I hope, though, that the Personnel is actually doing that and making the best choices for our district.
Thank you very much. Any other questions with Personnel, letters A through J, or comments? Okay. Moving on to Finance, letters A through I.
Taking a look at D-22, is that the same as we were looking at before?
Bob, that is the same item, correct? We moved it up to an action item so we can move forward, correct? Yes, so D-22 will be removed from the agenda for next week.
Question on D-18. Any scope of work for this? It seems rather vague, and do we, again, this seems like a staffing issue that we're addressing vaguely. Just was curious if there was any context for helping me to want to support this. Yeah, I can answer that.
Yeah, I can answer that. This is due to a strategy of, a string, I should say, of an open position. This was our payroll specialist. Our payroll specialist was promoted from within, who is now our staff accountant. However, that left the payroll specialist position open. We did post that position for a couple of months. We did not see quality candidates come through that we were hoping for. And we reached out to the First Pro to see if we could potentially get into a temp to hire and tap into some of their inventory, for which we did find three qualified candidates. One unfortunately was a distance from here and would not make the trip. And we decided on one that is actually located in Phoenixville, I believe, to come help us in an attempt to hire capacity.
Mr. Jackson?
Under item 19, could we, maybe vagueness is the word of the day, can we get some insight into what is being, what it means to provide consultation and oversight? Exactly what are they doing?
Yes, our administrator is gonna be on leave for a little while, and they're gonna be covering the building.
We probably should put that in the, in the item, just so we have a better understanding of what it's for. Just a comment, not a request, just a suggestion.
Note taken, thank you.
Question on 20, I think this is my last question. Thank you for your patience. So Explorations is the vendor, is that correct?
Explorations is who we work through, through the IU, to provide temporary administrative support whenever we have vacancies, yes.
So again, you're seeking sort of a blank check for some $660 per DM rate through December for, you know, elementary building principal, which I believe is an incredibly good job to have at our district. Can we go a little tighter with this? Or why are we seemingly approving or asking for the approval of an unknown figure through what I consider to be a long period of time?
If you would prefer to have a not-to-exceed number, that's gone well tonight, we can do that. I'm happy to put a dollar amount. Another concern with is the range that we could have somebody in place by the end of September. We could have somebody in place as late as November, December, depending upon the hiring process and the number of days that somebody's being held. So it's a pretty wide window. As far as the rate is concerned, this is a pretty competitive going rate, pretty consistent going rate with those positions. So we feel comfortable moving forward with this to ensure that our students and our staff are able to move forward.
Thank you. Did I hear earlier that Dr. Murray is stepping in for this? So is this of the same vacancy?
It is of the same vacancy, until we can have that person step in on September 5th.
Thank you. Going back to number 19, did we consider a teacher on assignment for that position? Temporary position?
Well, we did not, and there's a few reasons for that. We wanted someone with experience covering that building for the beginning of the year. A teacher on special assignment would be coming right out of the classroom, and I feel like that'd be unfairly putting that meta position around a building. So at this point, we felt comfortable bringing somebody in to help support that is familiar with the building, that has been in that building in the past, in that same capacity.
Thank you.
Additional questions, comments? Property, letter A. We're going on to Programming and Curriculum, letters A through E.
Let's start with A. At some point in time, as we tell our kids, the money's gonna run out. And I think we're at this point for after-school tutoring. Dr. Murray, I think this is yours. So I remember when this came up in March. Can, can you provide an update on the usage of this service as far as what we projected versus what's actually happened? And then the hard question is, when the money's gone, then what? This is gonna be put before the board as a cost, or we're not gonna do the service anymore?
Sure, so two parts to that. I'd be happy to provide some information. I don't have it off the top of my head, so I can't speak without looking it up. So I can definitely provide you with some more of that information. This after-school tutoring is a little bit different than the Brain Fuse that we bought. This is after-school tutoring being done by our teachers. That was something that we discussed in Curriculum Committee. That was really important, that we were offering it to our teachers first. And we're starting with the capacity of what our teachers are willing to do and able to do. So that's what this is, and this has already been approved, or I'm sorry, already been budgeted as part of the overall learning loss plan. You are correct, the money is finishing up. So all of the ESAR money needs to be spent by September of next year. So the plan has always been along the lines of, this is intended for learning loss to fill the gaps from COVID. So the intent is that over time, we should be moving away from that and that need for it. So we're continuing to plan, I'm continuing to look at regularly where our ESAR money is, where our learning loss money is. We are still spending that down. And I gave an update, I think, November, December at Curriculum Committee last year, and I plan on doing the same thing this year, as to have the status of where we are. I need to wait for all of the summer programming to hit. But we are kind of in the crunch time of one more year of all of these services that we've been providing with learning loss. And should the board want me to look at continuing some of them or evaluating that, I certainly will. But I think at this point, the idea was that this was intended for this purpose, and then after that funding dropped off, that's why we were very careful not to use it for positions that would no longer, you know, we'd be in the position where we'd have to make those cuts.
I agree with everything that you've stated. My concern just is the money's gonna run out. And then we would have been providing a service that our kids have benefited from. And then I'm just curious to know what metric we will use to determine that we don't need it anymore. And you don't have to answer that now, it can be a question and answer, respond for next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions, commentary? Okay, moving on to Conferences, section 10, letters A through G.
Item F. The cost is $2,400 to sit behind a laptop. So I'm trying to understand this cost. Is that the entire registration is $2,400? It's not a hotel room, it's not travel, it's virtual, and that's the cost?
Unfortunately, with Project Lead the Way, it is. The training is quite expensive. It's very similar to AP, where we're locked into, if we're gonna teach those, that content, you have to have them trained. There was, we did have somebody trained last year. And we do have some opportunities to look to see whether or not they can waive some of those costs, because the staff member who was teaching it last year is no longer teaching it. But unfortunately, that is the price, and there's not much we can do other than saying we're not gonna teach a Project Lead the Way course.
So the registration is a prerequisite for teaching a course?
Correct. Same as, very similar to AP.
All the engineers in the room might think differently, but, okay.
That's fine, all right.
Additional questions, comments? Okay, moving on, we have Section 11, Other Business, letters A through F. But of course, as always, we have Section A being only a first read, not being voted on next week. Okay, if there are no additional questions, we'll move on to Board Comment.
If I may, can I go first?
Yes, Ms. Rizzo.
Thank you. First, I do need to say thank you to the board. And the reason is, there's a lot of names on here. And if we did not, if we were not granted the authority of hiring over the summer, all of these names would be held up to 60 days, which would have really had an impact on us getting our school year started. So thank you for entrusting the administration to make those decisions. There have been some challenging conversations tonight, and we know that, but I think it's all part of the process. We have a work session to have these conversations, and I value that. We, I have to say thank you to our HR department, to all of our administrators. The summer, like every other summer, is filled with interviews and multiple rounds and multiple candidates. And I do believe they have all worked very hard to bring the best candidates forward, based on, based on their experience and based on what these candidates are bringing to the interview experience. As a last note, I would simply say, the Upper Providence vacancy, this board did make a decision that for principal-level positions and higher, that they would be involved with the process. We determined that would be round two. So there will be information coming either from me or from the HR department to ask for people that are interested in that, so that you can be part of that process as well. I just, I have to say that I really thank the board for trusting us to do this, because otherwise we'd be in a not-so-hot place right now. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. Any additional comments from the board?
I just got one or two, maybe three. On item four, I know we just sort of went over transportation routes. And I know there's some discussions that are happening at River Crest right now. It's an old discussion regarding the traffic light out on 29 and the entrance into River Crest. So I think we will be receiving some commentary from River Crest. I invited them to come to a board meeting, but you might also get an email from Tom Jaeger.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional board comments?
I do have a question. And this, I'm not sure, I could wait for a property meeting, but I'm not really sure where this would fit in. When we were talking about budgets last semester, or spring, we came across a lot of different relationships. And specifically, like the American Legion, this is what I was gonna talk to you about. Dave, we have this long-term agreement with the American Legion. And I'm just using that one as an example, because I sort of understand that. They run our baseball field. In exchange, they take care of it, they do this, and our, there's no financial transaction, correct? Right, so it's a love, they do this, we get to use it.
I wouldn't characterize that relationship.
It's a legal contract.
I thought it was an agreement.
Or an agreement is.
We have a licensing agreement with them. And there's an exchange of consideration on both parties' ends with regard to the existence of that agreement.
And I'm not questioning the relationship, but what I'm questioning is, some of these are pretty long-term, like 10-year agreements. And I don't, there are other agreements that I've learned about, like with the, with youth football, with, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't have the details on these, but like, we lease out some of our property for a mulch, not mulch.
For turf.
Turf, with Waltz's. And there's all of these different things that, it seems that, I don't know when they were last addressed or when they were looked at in terms of financial compensation.
I could say for the American Legion and for the youth football, both of those are up in the next two to three years. They were, one was like a five-year term, then extended for another 10 or 15. The other one was a longer term, but they're both coming up soon. Don't know about the turf one, actually, so that's one we'll have to dig into a little bit more.
I'd have to look into.
But do you see what I'm saying? Like, who is looking over those?
Bring it to property.
Okay, that's what I was, that's what my question was, is it property, is it finance? I don't know. But this idea of, we've got all of these relationships, which are all, I'm not saying anything bad about them, but I don't fully understand them. And for example, Dave sits on the board. Do we have any other connections like that, where we are hands-on with these agreements? I mean, I don't know, that's why.
So is this a general question, that you don't understand things as a board member?
I don't know the vast relationship.
So if you're asking about the Legion, yeah, that's, you can call me on that.
Oh, I know, that's what I'm saying, but.
If you're asking about turf, it's all over the place, I'm not quite sure.
But that's what I'm saying, it's all over the place. And I don't think we, I mean, I'm speaking for myself, I don't think I have a good picture of what all of these things are, because in some cases, we rent out the turf fields, or we do, we rent out football fields, or we take in money for certain things. And I don't know the consistency there, or why does somebody get a two-year contract versus a five-year contract with a 10-year extension? And those are the kind of things that, as we were looking through finances, I'm like, this is not consistent at all. Not that it has to be the same, but when's the last time some of these have been reviewed? That's all. And I'm not, this isn't anything, this is a curiosity.
It seems like you're looking at me and pointing at me, that's why I'm like, I don't know. I can speak about the Legion, and we're still doing that.
I think she's looking at you because you've been on the board. You're credible in this area with American Legion, it was not about.
You can call me, you can call me. I mean, my email is right there on the website, you know?
But I don't, I'm just asking.
I think there's a bigger ask here, that she is asking about, is getting a handle on the big picture as it relates to the agreements, that's something that.
Sure.
I think there's a certain amount of transparency we're looking for.
I'm not, there's nothing.
In some instances, we have 30, 40-year relationships, whether it be the Library at Royston Ford, whether it be what's occurring on Swamp Pike, whether it be the Legion, whether it be the youth football program. So, and I will tell you, as representing many boards in many places, there is probably a lack of consistency, because boards differ in terms of whatever their priorities are in a given time, and place, and manner. But in terms of the bigger ask, which I think is, can the board get a better understanding of what is out there?
Yes, transparency.
Yeah, I think we can, certainly we can.
Everything is, hold on, everything, let's not use that word, transparency, because everything is out there, that's what you guys are talking about, so you had to read it, right?
Well, that, I think, is what we're asking for, is that ability to see all the information and get an understanding about this. I know personally, when I was looking into the budget this year, I was made, you know, more aware that we have things like the turf farm that property, Waltz's turf farm is leasing our property on Swamp Pike. And so that, you know, those are the kinds of things that I was, had asked at the time for the, you know, is there revenue from that? Are we, is there insurance that's being paid? Things, information like that, that we just hasn't been, isn't available. And I, and I don't think there's any question about how it's being handled, but I think that we, there's a need for just gathering the information so that we can take a look at that. The library, the same thing. I think these are, it's a wonderful agreement, but, you know, just questions about insurance and things like that. And the same thing with the fields that we have, two different fields. So I think it's just a matter of consolidating information and sharing it with the current board and the community, for that matter.
Well, this is all public information. We talk about, and I'll talk about the Library, Royston Ford Library, we've talked about property and property for the last three or four years, and the work that we've done there. So I'm gonna stand with Mr. Schaefer here. If there are questions, just ask the appropriate committee for their information. And if we don't have it, then we can direct you to another place. But I think to bring it up here is to imply that.
Not at all.
You guys don't know what's going on, and I don't know that.
I don't like that implication. I think, I think we have it twofold, is, you know, oftentimes, we say that, you know, we need to take ownership of our own learning and ask the questions. If someone needs new information, they're showing vulnerability, and they are doing that. I think that is to be praised, when someone says, I wanna know more about something that's not put on forward in front of this agenda today. So if there is at least five people that would like to get that information compiled, because it would be more streamlined and effective to do that versus going to one person for this and one person for this, and not knowing if we're slipping, there are things slipping through the cracks. I would say if there's five people, then we can instruct the solicitor, the administration, to do that.
But what are the questions? It's very general.
My question is, what are, we have all of these relationships and agreements or contracts. Can we see them?
So any outside contract, is that what you're saying?
No, but like these, what other, so we, you sit on the board, I'm just using American Legion, because that's, that's a board that you sit on as part of this board.
Right, I was, I was appointed.
Right, which is fantastic.
Yet another volunteer position that I am so proud of.
The only reason I'm looking is because I feel like I know more about that relationship, because you go, you attend, you bring back information. We have these other relationships where we don't have people on boards or knowing what's going on in terms of, or maybe there is, and there's just not a public awareness.
No, there isn't, like, why isn't there a.
Library.
A liaison for the library? Why isn't there a Waltz's liaison? So I think it was when we first reorganized, when we first reorganized two years ago, it was like, oh, there's this Legion thing, that no one ever, it was, you know, and so, I don't understand what is so confusing, is that we have discovered there's multiple agreements that the district has with other entities for not every contract, use of facilities, but things that are very unique, such as youth football, such as the library, such as Waltz's farm. So these were discovered in the budget, what I'm. So these were discovered in the budget, what I'm understanding you're saying. And is there five people on the board that would like you to compile that information so we have it all in one place?
That's not my concern. You're using the word discovered like it was hidden.
I didn't ask what your concern was. I'm helping Ms. Weingarten clarify what she's requesting. Nobody's implying that anything was done or that we didn't know anything.
At this point, Mr. Rizzo, I think the important thing is, do you understand the ask that's being requested, and do we have five people?
So that's, if the will of the board is for us to pull together that information, I would be happy to do that. I think it's good information to have. I can certainly add it as we move forward onboarding and board orientations moving forward. So that's, information is presented on a regular basis. I guess I would ask, one, is it will of the board for me to do that? And two, would that, would you prefer that to come back to this venue or to go to property?
Clarifying question. What is exactly the ask? I'm sorry, I, it's.
My understanding is that, my understanding is that we want to know what agreements we have out there with outside entities, American Legion, youth football, Waltzes.
Any outside entity.
Those type things.
A listing of the agreements.
Yeah, every single one, yes.
Dates, summaries, every single one? Why are you being so, it's a clarifying question, and I'm, it's my right to ask because it seems like it could be a very lengthy administrative request.
Well, it seems to me, it seems to me that what we're interested in is the longer-term ones that may fall off people's radar.
Okay, so that's another, so what are we saying? Anything over five years, anything over? I'm just trying to help you.
I appreciate that.
So that you don't chase into your administrative team.
Five years sounds reasonable to me. I don't think we approve anything else longer than that, per, less than that.
It would seem to me, maybe Mr. Rizzo can have a little bit of discretion hearing what he hears from the board as to those types of unique contractual relationships that he brings forward, those as a, as a list with an example of where these, where these relationships stand.
Agreed.
And it should be brought to property, if you want to stay with procedure and protocol.
It seems more of a property issue that you go there.
That's fine, thank you.
So the will of the board is to do that? Yes?
Yes, 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 yes.
All right. We're on it.
Additional board comment? Public to be heard. Again, this is an opportunity for the public to approach the podium with your name, township of residence. It does not need to be specific to any agenda item.
Dave Lackey, Limerick Township. I'm very happy today to see that we're moving forward on the Spring City Elementary Expansion Project. I want to take a minute to thank Mr. Jackson, Mr. Hunter, and Mr. Rizzo for all your hard work and leadership in getting us this far. You have no idea what this school means to the community, what it means to our teachers, students, and staff, to our families and friends. These are significant renovations. We're talking about adding rooms for music, art, and Ram Quest. We're adding two full-size learning support classrooms. We're talking about spaces for occupational therapy, physical therapy, gifted programs, speech, reading, and math. Spring City Elementary is the only elementary school in the district without a dedicated music and art room. And we're not just investing in buildings, we're investing in ourselves. We're investing in our potential and our future. We're investing in the idea that our kids deserve the opportunity to be their best selves, and it's our responsibility to give them those tools. I appreciate that the board takes their job seriously and understands the significance of their position to make these investments. These are tough decisions, but they are critical to get right. We can't demand a high-quality education without considering where the education largely takes place. Let's get this done, and let's do it right. Let's invest in Spring City Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Okay.